We're going to call the meeting to order at 5:30. This is a closed-door session commencing at 5:30 on April 1st. And do we need a roll call?
You do.
Yes, if we could have a roll call, please. Here. Habsut.
Here.
Mayor, I previously asked for a closed-door session to discuss pending litigation in two deeply related cases involving the old Boynton High School Partnership LLC versus the city of Boynton Beach. One case is a breach-of-contract case. And Boynton Old High School Partnership LLC, city of Boynton Beach, that is a writ of certiorari case challenging the city's denial of a rezoning application and a site plan. We are permitted to go behind closed doors to discuss the litigation. And in attendance in the closed-door session will be a court reporter who will take a transcript of the proceeding, the members of the City Commission, myself, Mike Cirilla, who is Assistant City Attorney, and Lyman Reynolds, who is Special Counsel handling the breach-of-contract case. Will be approximately 45 minutes, in which case we'll return here to resume the regular meeting that just began and announce that the closed-door session is closed.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess to the closed-door room. Officially close the closed-door hearing. We are finished and back at the dais, and we will commence the City Commission meeting about 6:30.
Good enough.
That's perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. We're going to call the April 1st City Commission meeting to order. This is April Fool's Day, but we are having a serious meeting. We'll begin the meeting tonight with a roll call. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sella?
Here.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Here.
Okay, is Reverend Georgia Hillsland here? She was going to give our invocation tonight. I don't see her. I guess she couldn't make it. So maybe we could get former Mayor Woodrow Hay to give us an invocation. Would that be possible? Thank you. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Casello, if you please rise.
Father, I pray. Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together to declare your word. We thank you for all those who are present here this afternoon, who has your continuous blessing on this commission. We pray that you will put your loving arms around them individually and collectively, that everything that we do be done decently and in order. We pray, Father, that the decision that will be made here tonight will be for the betterment of the city and the citizens of this great city. And as we leave this place, let us leave on one accord, thinking of the better tomorrow that only you can give. We ask all of this, in your Savior's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America, and to the mother of this nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, clear, righteous, and just as for all.
If you all would like to join me in the brand's promise statement, it's time to take a look at Boynton Beach, where recreation is a lifestyle. Thank you. Agenda approval, any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda? I do have one addition under announcements, 3C. If you would list, we'll have a proclamation for National Library Week. It's an add-on. Any other additions or deletions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion of second. The agenda has amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous. This takes us to informational items by members of the City Commission. I'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday before last, I was invited to the Safety Fair that was held out at the Carolyn Sims Complex, but due to bad weather and lack of participation, it was promptly canceled. Also, at the last Commission meeting, Ocean Breeze, they came along with Habitat stating that that was crime in the area. I'm happy to say that I met with that homeowners' association, along with Chief Katz, two representatives from the Police Department, and also Smart Water. We got a lot accomplished that night. I'm happy to say that Inca, along with Ocean Breeze and District 2, are now Smart Water communities. I'd like to thank the chief personally for meeting us there. We had a nice meeting, and I'd like to get this out to the heart of Boynton, along with other neighborhoods that's in District 2, about the Smart Water. Great program. Thank you.
Mr. Merker.
Nothing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sella?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the 22nd, we also attended the Safety First Fair, and unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate with us, but it was a good effort. Also, on the 26th, I met with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning gentlemen, and we went over a nice, open discussion, asking for ideas and thoughts on what our plan is going to be over here for our new town square, downtown, if you will. So a lot of good input there. And I also had a lunch date with a Davy Camiller, who owns quite a bit of property in the CRA district, and one of them being the One Ocean LLC. So it was a good meeting.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I attended the, since the last Commission meeting, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board as the alternate, because Woodrow Hay was no longer on the commission. I worked with the Sister City Committee to set up art at an essay contest at the Boynton Mall. I attended the Florida League of Cities Fire District Review Committee. And I also went to the Safety First Fair, which, as our reporter, was a little under-attended. Had a Treasure Coast Regional Planning interview about future events, and I had a meeting with Mayor Taylor, not this Mayor Taylor, but County Mayor Priscilla Taylor, about the Lake Idah Four Acres. And also Friday night with Mayor, this Mayor Taylor, we went to the war ceremony for the Sister Cities Young Artists out at the mall, and that was well-attended.
Thank you. I also attended the Safety First Fair on Saturday, the 22nd. I, myself, and former Mayor Woodrow Hay were invited and went to the Angels Recovery. It's a, out in Wellington, it's a unique five-star alcohol substance abuse treatment center. And why we went all the way out there to Wellington, they're also trying to work with some organizations we have going into the heart of Boynton. And also, we found out that they're in Boynton at the Women's Club three nights a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, to try to recruit people who may need that kind of help. So it was kind of a very interesting, they got like 15 acres out there with horses and all the works. It was quite an installation out there. On Tuesday, the 25th, I was invited to Sterling Village, attended the COP, Boynton Intercoastal Group, for all the citizens on patrol there. They just wanted to, they invited me as the mayor to give a little input on what's going on in the city.
On Wednesday, Wednesday at 11:30, I attended the League of Cities Luncheon in Green Acres, and was nominated to be on the board. Woodrow Hay was on that board, and now that he's no longer elected official, they had to have replaced, so I'm going to be on that board. Then on the 27th, I attended, I was met with the Treasure Coast representative that's doing the study to recommend to us what to do with this downtown environment. That was a good meeting. On March 27th, I met with four women officers from the Women's Club to discuss their concerns at the Women's Club. And Mrs. Pat Waldron is the one that invited me. There was three other women there. I can tell you that they gave me a tour of what's needed to be done at the Women's Club. It's in dire need of repair. The windows and doors all need to be repoxied or whatever it takes. Extremely expensive to do that. They showed me where, there's a leak in the roof. They didn't know where it was leaking. They had a man there on the roof trying to find out, but the water's coming down on the wall inside on that library room, which is a room facing Federal Highway, and the plaster's starting to peel off the walls. So they need work on the walls. They need work on all the windows and doors. And they're hurting. They're hurting for the money to do that. The Women's Club costs between $70,000 and $80,000 a year to maintain the building, to keep it operating. Of that $70,000, $80,000, about half of it goes just to insure the building. It's the most historic building we have in the city of Boynton Beach, and I really, you know, hope that we can find some way and maybe help them to find funds. I know they're going to put in for a grant from the CRA, hopefully for the outside facade. And that would have to, if they can qualify under all our CRA requirements, that would come to the CRA Board for approval. And but even if they got that, it would be like $15,000, which would only be a drop in the bucket for what it's going to take to do all those windows and doors for that facility. But again, like I say, it's on the National Historic Register. If anybody has any ideas on how we can help and get money, they can sure use that help over there. They're a small group of women, and they're limited in how they're fundraising. They do go for a lot of grants and things, but if anybody has any ideas, we'd certainly be willing to listen. So did that. On the 28th of March, I had my team of hope, that's the thing I do, and own, to help people who have felonies on their record, to see if I can help them get interviews in the city. They can't, if you come out and you have a felony on your record and you check that on your application, you don't even get an interview. So I'm trying to break that barrier, so people don't go back out in the street, go back to jail, if we can help them get in, at least get an interview, for those who really want to turn their life around. On the 28th of March, went to the Children's Service Council, the Action Alliance, which is a mental health institute for mental health advisory. There's like 33 people on that, and I've met with the, one of the women have already met with me on that, and it's, we had met, myself had met and former Mayor Woodrow Hay had met with this lady, and then they asked us to come and see what we could do as a city, as far as mental health. What are we doing in Boynton Beach as a city? And they gave me an entire booklet on what mayors could probably do in their cities as far as mental health. And we do have, every city has mental health problems. We all do. A lot of our families have been affected. I mean, why are our kids, you know, in school bullying each other? Why are they sometimes shooting each other? Why are parents shooting their kids? Why are kids shooting their parents? There's problems out there. You read the paper every day. What are we doing about it? What is kind of focus does this city have on it? Well, this is about a 13-page booklet, but it has the plan and how to go about it in your city to try and find out what you can do. I told them at the meeting, one person couldn't do that. One person cannot do everything that's required here, but, so I'm going to ask the city manager to place on the next meeting's agenda for our commission to consider appointing a Mental Health Advisory Board to the commission, that I could get people who maybe have had this, maybe already had that in their families, or would like to work in that area. And I think with a committee, we could do what's in this book and bring it to the focus in the city, and really help to address and at least lead people to the areas where they need to find help. I would just say, for the commission, I'll just tell you, mayors and local public officials can have a unique role in shaping community responses that will promote recovery, prevent behavioral health disorders, reduce the impact of behavioral health problems when they do occur, and ensure that needed treatments and services are available. So I think that's something we could address, so I would ask at the next meeting that the commission would give me their input on how, if they think that would be a good thing to point to committee, to help us pursue that. Let's see. Okay, did, as he mentioned, we went, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, I did attend the Young Artists, Young Authors Awards recognition at the mall. It was very good. It's amazing what those kids, the things that they have in their mind and how they put it on paper. It's incredible. Then on Saturday, I attended a ribbon-cutting at Renzo's Cafe and Pizzeria. It's on Boynton Beach Boulevard. If you go, before you get to Congress, there's Dunkin' Donuts on your left, right across the street, and that is Renzo's. They have, they have two restaurants in Boca, so they decided to open up one here in Boynton. And I can tell you, if you like Italian food, it's delicious. Just, they had a ribbon-cutting there, and their grand opening was yesterday. Then I did also, went to an opening right next block over here. The Catholic Charities opened the building. If you knew where DJ's Restaurant is there, across from the car wash, right across the street, there's a big, there's a building there. A gentleman bought that, he wanted to be anonymous, and gave it to the Catholic Charities to support Birthline and Lifeline Pregnancy Caring Center. And they had their grand opening Sunday at 3:00, and I attended that. So we have that also going on in our city, and that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, before you leave, back to mental health, the booklet that you received, I don't know about nobody else, but can I get a copy so that I can look at it before the next meeting?
Absolutely. I'll get a copy and give it to each of all of you. I'll have the city copy and give everybody a copy.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to throw in a couple of statements regarding mental health. What the mayor said, I totally agree with him, but there's different segments of mental health. He's pinpointing, it sounds like, pretty much the younger people. Part of that is, which is also part of mental health, is obviously drugs. Why people start drugs. And lastly, regarding mental health, to me, emotionally, personally, professionally, and factually, the saddest of all is cognitive impairment as people get older. The reasons why have not been pinpointed. Many tests have been done. I personally experienced this, this November 3rd, my father passed away. He had Alzheimer's. Nothing, nothing is uglier when your parent, your friend, your sibling does not know who you are. So I would like to encourage that this also be part of the mental health. I also would like to say, as a commissioner who gets the opportunity to sit down with union leaders, let alone the employees of a city, one of the benefits which is not being discussed for these professions, for these people, dealing with mental health is long-term care, and it is not in the healthcare plan that's being presented. I sat down with Fire Commissioner, I, Union Leader. I am not with the police yet, but if you want a benefit that represents the rest of your life, let alone how your family gets intertwined, when your son or your daughter lives out of the area and all of a sudden they have to come back home, and not for love and kisses. So I think these issues also, when you talk about mental health, are that crucial. And as I look out here, I would guess that most of us are past 39 years old, and this issue for mental health as we get older is that crucial. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't mean to limit it to children. When you get the book, it'll be adults, homeless people, you name it, the whole, the whole thing is there, so I'll share that information with you. Okay? All right. And if there's nothing else?
Just real quick note, this coming Saturday at the Links Golf Course, they're having their 14th annual Golf for Pink. It's for breast cancer, and I'd like to commend Ron Tapper up there, our pro, for doing a great job. The course is looking great, and it's going to be a great turnout for a good cause. Thank you, Ron.
Okay, one last, just for the commission's sake. This Thursday, we have a new commissioner on board, so there'll be a new group picture taken for outside in the hall, and that's scheduled for 3:00 this Thursday for all the commissioners. Hope you all be there for that group photo. Okay. That'll take us to announcements, committee, and special events and presentations.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, before we move forward, nobody said anything about autism. I'm just saying, and that was something that probably, you know, probably slipped the city scope or anybody, but I'm just saying autism is another part that we need to be looking at, and you know, this month is Autism Month, and we just need to recognize that. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, announcement by Director of Development Nancy Byrne.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission and citizens. Nancy Byrne, Director of Development. It's my pleasure this evening to announce a special meeting next Thursday at 5:00 here in the Commission chambers. That's April 10th. The meeting will be for, held by our Community Improvement Division, to discuss the future planning of our Community Development Block Grant allocation that comes from the Housing and Urban Development at the federal level. We expect this year, better news than what you saw in your agenda backup, we actually expect $478,192 in funding toward the city. This public meeting will discuss affordable housing, housing issues in the city, and we'll also, we'll have the applications for social services applicants that want to come in and apply for some of these funds. So we welcome everyone to come next Thursday here at 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the second meeting in April, originally scheduled for Tuesday, April 15th, 2014, has been rescheduled to Wednesday, April 16th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in observance of Passover. Instead of on Tuesday, the 15th, we're going to meet on Wednesday, April 16th, so, but it can observe Passover. Okay, next item will be if the library, Director of Library, will meet me at the podium, I'd like to present the proclamation for National Library Week. Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, and libraries work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone. And whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing resident free adult literacy tutoring, after-school homework help for kids and teens, and adult educational entertainment programs. And whereas librarians are professionally trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology, training, and access to a large selection of databases. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, such as helping the unemployed to find jobs, helping citizens apply for government assistance, providing free computer training, providing access to download free eBooks through Overdrive, and to download free music through Freegal. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach recognizes the benefits derived from the services of the Boynton Beach City Library. Now therefore, I Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim, April 13th to the 19th, 2014, as National Library Week. In witness whereof, I fear and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at the Boynton Beach, Florida, on the first day of April 2014. I can tell you, I don't know of any other city that can match our library and the services that we provide. We have a staff, a director and a staff that do an excellent job every day. We're so proud of them.
I'm Craig Clark, Library Director. Thank you very much, Mayor, for the kind words and for this honor, and thank you for your support of the library.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to public audience. Individual speakers, be limited to three minutes. Presentations at the direction of the chair, and this three-minute allowance may need to be, I won't worry about that. Please give your name and address for the record. If you'd like to address the commission on items not on the agenda, you may do so at
Good evening. My name is Michael Byrd, 7107 Pinehurst Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. And I'm the president of the East Point Wildcats. So we're preparing for 2014 season. Last Sunday, we got invited to the Miami Dolphins Award Show for Youth Programs, and we walked away with some great honors here in the city of Boynton Beach. They honor top male and female scholar athletes in the youth programs, and both the male and the female category, both were from our program here in the city of Boynton Beach. Both the male and the female scholar athletes are honor roll students. Every report card, they're always on the honor roll, and it was an honor to have both of those come from our program, and they only honored eight of them in the whole state of Florida. The other great honor that we were able to bring home was, again, in the whole state of Florida, they only honored the top eight youth programs. And one of the top eight youth programs is right here in the city of Boynton Beach. And then just a note from our program that we wanted everybody to know is, last year we had a young man in our program, he was eight years old. He passed away from asthma. So this year, we dedicated our first home game, which will be August 26th, as the Keandre Waters Day. We're going to be looking to do some things geared towards asthma and trying to get companies and different people to come out, bring awareness to the city and to our community when it comes to asthma. So if anybody has any resources or anything they can link us up with to bring some people out, please contact us and let us know. We want to make it a fun day, but we also want to bring awareness to the community when it comes to asthma, because we do have a lot of kids in our program that do have asthma. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd, before you leave, you know, I sat in the audience and also I, you know, worked with you all before in different areas, and now, tonight, you know, I'm just elated at the things that you all are doing with the youth in the city of Boynton. You all are planting seeds. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm going to present tonight $1,000 to your group to help water those seeds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wow.
Suzanne Ross, Development Officer for the Schoolhouse Children's Museum and Learning Center. I'd like to inform you of an upcoming special event at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum and Learning Center, and invite you to the inaugural Princesses and Superheroes Day on August 12th, from 10:30 to 1:30 PM. Tickets are available at the museum, so we invite you to grab your capes and tiaras. Join us for Family Friendly Day of Activities, Games, Crafts, Music, and of course, princesses and superheroes. Thank you.
Edward Tedman, 869 Northwest 8th Avenue, Laurel Hills. This is not an agenda item. I have a concern about the, watching the recycle truck employees. There's one man on the truck to drive, to stop, to pick up, to load the truck, put the containers back in the yard, drive on to the next house. I noticed that there, I talked to Jason in the Utilities Department, he told me there are four trucks for all four districts of the city. We're the third-largest city in Palm Beach County.
Population-wise, yeah. Population-wise, we're the third largest.
Thank you. Okay. I, I see on the waste pickup, the yard waste pickup truck, there are three guys, one driver and two pickup people. I think that's just too much of a burden on one person to have to drive to pick up. Just in my community alone, in Laurel Hills, we have over 400 homes. This, if, I understand this is a result of budget cuts, but I think it's just too much of a burden on one person to have to do this. So I'd like to recommend that if you have some bonding opportunity or a grant opportunity coming up, that maybe you could see fit to find the funding there to, to help this out till, you know, till the market, the real estate market comes back. Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Yes. If you want to give a damn, eat, pass it down. Save you some steps.
Janet Morgano, 803 Northeast 3rd Street, in the beautiful city of Boynton Beach, Florida. I apologize, I've had four back surgeries, and you talk about medicine. I've been on the best of the best, and I respect medicine. But in saying that, I had to write my concern, so I apologize. Driving in the state of Florida is no longer a privilege to me. Rather, it takes great skill and experience to get around safely on our roads and highways. Society is very busy with cell phones, text messaging, anger management, and gun control. Put society behind the wheel of an automobile with all of its gizmos and gadgets, and it becomes a free-for-all. I've been blessed with much, and I heard Ronald Reagan today on TBN saying, "For every blessing comes a responsibility." I own a sports car, a Chevy Suburban. While I choose not to talk about profiling... While I choose not to talk about profiling while driving a sports car, I do want to talk about driving my Chevy Suburban. I rescue and own two Great Danes, and that's the reason why I bought the truck, to transport them. They go with me everywhere I go for protection. I'm finding the latest distraction to our roads while driving are red light camera, red light camera lights. While I'm not opposed to safety of any measure, I am opposed to the due process or the lack of when it involves red light camera lights, and their yellow change lights that vary around town. I own four vehicles, and I have more than one driver in my household. This is not considered when questioned at a red light camera light. I'm innocent until proven guilty, and I'm entitled to due process under the Constitution. The stopping distance for my truck while transporting two Great Danes while abiding by the posted speed limit is at least a half of a block. I cannot safely come to a stop at a red light camera light when given a three-second yellow change time. It's my understanding that in Pasco County, Judge Anne Wansborough found the red light camera law unconstitutional because it shifts the burden of proof from the state to the offender, and I would have to agree with her. It's a violation of due process, which everyone has a right to. The Second District Court of Appeal has taken jurisdiction over its legality involving photographs and video into evidence.
I can need you to try to wind it up as quick as you can.
The Senate has stalled the ban. I mean, to be brief, everybody has their own opinions, and I hope you, because I saw on the calendar that there's two hearings coming up for the red light cameras. And I hope you take in consideration what I said. There is a sidebar. I received a traffic citation at Seacrest in Boynton Beach. And as I said, stopping in a truck does not give me enough time. There's different articles that I've shared with you. I've driven around the city and tested different lights, and they could vary between three seconds and six seconds. I, in a truck, would prefer six seconds to get through that light instead of three.
I hear what you're saying. I know they're discussing red lights at the state level too right now at the legislature, but I will tell you that a lot of the roads, like Boynton Beach Boulevard, federal highways, all of that, those yellow lights are set by the county. But we can talk with them, and we had them, we discussed one just recently at Federal and 23rd, and I think they added one second to it for us. But they have rules that they go by for how long they will time those lights, so we work with them. So I hear what you're saying.
Okay. And that's the next visit, is to my county commissioners. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Herman Stevens, 2774 Avenue, O'Salee and Gulf Stream. I'm an attorney, and I'm here because I'm representing a young lady by the name of Kswana Bean. Chief, what had happened was she was living with a gentleman, and pursuant to a warrant, the police department had gone into the place of residence, and they had taken certain narcotics. Ultimately, by the state attorney's office, this gentleman was charged with simple possession. And while they were in the home, they end up taking certain money, a lump sum of money that was in the home. He was, and the reason why I say that it's important that he was on a charge of possession is because any money is considered to be irrelevant. There were some activities supposedly that led them to have a warrant to go in, but he was ultimately never charged with sale. The important thing is here, is that they had sent out information, the Boynton Beach Police Department had sent out information saying that they were going to forfeit the money, that they wanted to go through the forfeiture procedure. We then responded in kind legally and said that we were going to challenge that. Once they got the challenge, they decided not to go forward. We thought everything was fine. We go to court, we attempt to get the money. We can't get the money because the state has a memo from an Officer Haugh, I think it's H-O-U-G-H. And Officer Haugh says, "No, try to get the money pursuant to a plea." So now what they're attempting to do is trying to get resort of a plea, something that they could never, ever get in a civil hearing. They would never be able to, to be able to successfully be able to get it. Ms. Bean is not here this evening. She feels uncomfortable to come. And, and right now, I'm doing everything I can to be able to get the funds for her. There is a paper trail that we have, and this is one reason why I'm coming to you, because I'm getting nowhere with law enforcement. There's a paper trail. Back in October of 2013, she received a settlement pursuant, an accident that she had had, and it was substantial. And she didn't put any money in the bank. She bought a small, she bought a used car, and the balance of it she kept in the home. And so when they found the money, they thought that it was a sort of criminal proceeds. It was not. It was hers. Please, whatever you can do, I'm doing everything I can on the legal end, but I think there are other avenues to pursue this. Whatever you can do, we don't want the police department to get in the habit of just taking what would otherwise be innocent people's money. You can't criminalize all behavior, because all behavior is not criminal. I had a conversation with Officer Haugh, and he made it point-blank clear to me that this is going to be the course going forward. We're going to take all money, because we're tired of people coming in and saying, "It's moms, it's dads, it's aunts, it's uncles," and it's very insulting, but this is what I'm getting. So there is no due process. You're able to, you're not able to win it on a civil limb, but you're able to come in through the back door and try to hang a plea over someone's head, saying, "I'm going to send you to jail for a period of time unless you give this money." It's not right. Don't let it happen. If someone could please get back with me, respond back, let me know. We go to court on the 28th. I just like the response. Someone needs to help Ms. Bean. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Did you leave? Did you get his name and contacts? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, just before Mr. Stevens leave, I'd just like to let them know that that's disclosure. I'm just saying, he did call me, so I did speak with Mr. Stevens on the phone.
Thank you.
Steve Antone, 234 Southeast 2nd Avenue, Boynton Beach. I just want to remind people, as we come in, we have a lot of heritage right there on that wall. I was fortunate to take some pictures for the city of all those that they've used. One of the biggest things, like I said, is we have a heritage in the city. It is our cultural identity. It is a very important thing for us to have, and we sometimes forget these things, that all of you someday will be on that board, and that will be your legacy. And I just want to remind everybody that that's very, very important. We sometimes forget this. That heritage and our legacy in this town, and the cultural importance of heritage is extremely important. We lose that sometimes. And I just wanted to make sure that the heritage is important from those folks to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission this time? Seeing none, we will close the public audience and move to administrative. The first item is Proposed Order Resolution R14-027, Appoint a City Commission Representative and Alternate to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. I'm currently serving at the League of Cities and been nominated to be on their board, so I would like to keep that appointment, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
So moved.
Okay. Then we need a alternate. Anybody wish to be part of that as an alternate?
I'll take it, Mayor.
Okay. Make the Vice Mayor. Is there a motion to appoint the Vice Mayor?
So moved.
Is there a second? I have most second. All in favor of those two appointments? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion unanimous. Next one is Resolution 14-028, Appoint a City Commission Representative to Alternate to the Metro Plan and Planning Organization. I believe that Commissioner Fitzpatrick has been the alternate to that. Is that correct?
Yes. I'd like to be the regular.
So moved.
Second.
Most of the second to make Fitzpatrick the representative to MPO. Anybody like to volunteer to serve as the alternate?
So moved.
Who? Do you want to be?
You said you want to volunteer?
He said no.
No. I'll serve as the alternate then. So moved.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint McCray as the alternate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of those two appointments? Say aye. Aye. And it asks, Proposed Resolution R14-029, Appoint a City Commission Representative and Alternate to Coalition Boynton West Residents Association called Cobra. Commissioner Casello has been attending that as from the commission and...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the last year or so, I've been attending. The perfect attendance there. We've made some friends, contacts. It's going well, and I'd like to continue in that position.
With that record, offer motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who would like to be as the alternate to the Cobra? Is there, anybody want to volunteer to be alternate?
I'll take it. I'll take it.
You sure? Okay. Commissioner McCray, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is unanimous. Resolution 14-03, Appoint a City Commission Representative and Alter the Countywide Intergovernmental Coordination Program. Commissioner Merker, you want to jump on one?
Not that. No, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Anybody like to do that, the Countywide Intergovernmental Coordination Program? I'll take it if nobody wants.
Oh, go for it.
If you want it, go. I'll give it to you. I'll just be the alternate.
I was going to say the same thing. It doesn't matter to me, one word or the other.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Right. While they're bickering, we offer both of you all, okay?
So moved.
Okay. There's a...
I'm Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick is the representative, and if anybody else wants, doesn't want to alter, I'll take it. Okay?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion. Appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions and city advisory boards. I have two appointments this evening. First one is Commissioner McCray. You have a regular appointment. There's two people, Roger Cope, who is a current regular member, wants to be reappointed, or Michelle Dionne, who's also a current and would like to be reappointed.
Like to reappoint Roger Cope, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Next one is Mike Fitzpatrick, a regular appointment. Michelle Dionne is a current member, would like to be reappointed.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion is unanimous. Takes us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Nothing was pulled, so that's been...
Oh, I thought you were waiting.
Go ahead.
I didn't realize. I'd like to make a correction on the minutes.
Which item?
Minutes.
Which item is that? 6D? All right. Pulled 6D. Is there a motion to approve consent with the exception of 6D?
So moved.
Second. A motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, item D, approve the minutes from the regular city commission meeting held March 18th, 2014.
When we were talking about Woodrow Hay, they had me down here saying as a real trendsetter. And I understand you have to shorten things up, but what I think I really said was something in the effect that on July, 4th of July, 1963, he was one of a group of people who integrated all white Boynton Beach. And I think that's more important than being a trendsetter.
Can we make sure that's added to the minutes, please? Okay. We'll see if that correction is made.
I'd just like to say, I think he is a trendsetter.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve item D with those changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Takes us to bids and purchases over $100,000. Approve the automobile liability and damage insurance in property and casualty insurance program renewals for policy year 2014-15, and authorize the city manager to execute the required documents.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is unanimous. Goes to public hearing. There is none. City managers' report. Approve implementing the conditional lien waiver pilot program.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Economic Development Manager, Scott, is going to present a brief synopsis to you. This is something we've been working on for, gosh, a good year, an economic development initiative to help us deal with properties that are either in foreclosure, trying to be sold, but are straddled with some heavy code liens and liens on it. And this is a process that'll help us facilitate a sale of a property, be turned over, to be redeveloped, and allow us to settle on liens and get these properties moved and improved. So I'll let Scott go from there.
I think you did a pretty good job there, Lori.
I left out a lot of details.
In every city, there are properties that are chronically blighted. They sit there, and code liens, while necessary, sometimes they become an impediment to the redevelopment of those properties. We have several of those throughout the city. So we worked with our legal counsel and with other cities throughout the state of Florida who have implemented a similar program. It's called the Conditional Lien Waiver Program. If a property owner or if an interested, future property owner is interested in bringing a property into compliance, they can apply through this program. The liens that exist will be conditionally waived. At the same time, they will enter into an agreement with the city whereby they are given a certain timeframe to bring the property into compliance. If they're not, if the property is not brought into compliance and the agreement's not extended, then liens are retroactively put back onto the property. But what this is doing is allowing current property owners who have a large amount of liens on the property to gain clear and marketable title, and that title will allow them to obtain financing to improve their properties. The other circumstance that would happen is if a property owner was not interested in bringing the property into compliance but wanted to sell to somebody that would, this would be one of those programs that would help with the future redevelopment of that property. So the program is, it's a pilot program for a period of one year, and we're recommending it for, as another tool in our economic development toolbox.
I think it's a great idea. It's a good chance to get these properties up to code and to, and to let the business committee once again know that we're business friendly and make this things happen here. So I'm in favor of it. Any other commissioners have a comment?
Motion to approve.
After you do your thing with the city marriage, will this go, I think we discussed this, we'll go back to the clerk, the code clerk magistrate that we have?
It will be administratively, right now is the way it could be handled. We're recommending Lori being able to enter into the agreements, but the agreements will go before our special magistrate, who will execute the...
It doesn't, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous. Confirmed budget workshop date, times for fiscal 14, 15-year operating and capital budget, July 21st through 23rd, 2014, in the city library program room. Does anybody have any problems with those dates at this time?
Yeah, I wanted to see if the times were okay with the commission. We tried to do a couple late starts, and then the second day, an earlier start. We usually don't go into a third day. We always schedule it, so we have it. But most importantly, the dates are preset. It was, if you're comfortable with the timeframes.
As far as I know now, I'm okay. Everybody okay? Sounds like I don't hear any dissent. Is there a motion to approve these dates?
Second.
A motion second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. New business. Consider the recommendation from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board to amend Code of Ordinance Section 1639, which prohibits any dog at any park at any time, whether muzzled leashed or not. Leashed or not. The Advisory Board recommends allowing leashed dogs at the following parks for a period of one year, JC Park, Intercoastal Park, Dewey Park, or Boynton Lakes Park. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director. This item is being brought before you tonight on the request of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, whereby through several meetings, we have been discussing the fact that currently we have an ordinance that prohibits dogs, whether leashed or not, at any of our parks. And acknowledging that dogs, in many cases, are more than just pets, they are considered and acknowledging that dogs, in many cases, are more than just pets, they are considered members of the family, and the great popularity of these animals whereby many families now throughout our community and throughout the United States own dogs, and we felt that, the board felt that it was appropriate to at least have a discussion regarding the possibility of allowing leashed and licensed dogs at some of our parks. So through many conversations, again, this item was discussed at probably the past three or four Recreation and Parks Advisory Board meetings, we came to a point that at least we felt that for now, it may be best to at least put forth a recommendation that we try this for a year, and we tried it at various parks, just to get a sense of how it impacts us and whether it's something that we want to move forward on with this into the future beyond just one year. So the board wanted to do this in a manner where we picked, they picked four parks that were in each of the quadrants of the city, and trying to avoid parks that are primarily used for athletics or active recreation. For example, Pence Park is a very active athletic type of facility. Barrier Free Park is one big playground, whereas in contrast, one of the parks that they chose was Intercoastal Park, whereby the park does have a playground, but it is fenced in. So just to at least give you a basis of reference, Intercoastal Park is located, of course, on North Federal Highway. It is a little over nine acres. It was constructed in two thousand and three. Many of you are familiar with the park, it has the large pavilion and a few other smaller pavilions, of course, it has Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. It is probably one of our more popular parks, and as is the case in many of our facilities, it is not uncommon that you'll see people in there with dogs, even despite the ordinance that prohibits them right now. The next slide, I believe, will show another one of the parks that we are suggesting, or I'm sorry, that the board is suggesting. So if Terry will show me the next park on the slide. Dewey Park is on South Ocean Avenue. Dewey Park is barely a quarter of an acre. I think most of the commission is very familiar with this facility, but in essence, as you well know, it's got that beautiful shade banyan tree, it's got parking along the road, it's got the small little play areas where people can play checkers or chess, and it's something that, again, is probably the closest that we have right here to our city hall complex. The next park that the board recommended was Boynton Lakes Park, that is on the northwest quadrant of our city. Boynton Lakes Park was built in nineteen ninety-four, it's got very limited parking, but it is a very large park, it's close to ten acres, it's open sunrise to sunset. It is one that we have gotten some feedback from the public, both negative and positive. And the last of the four parks that the Recreation and Parks Board suggested is J.C. Park, which is on South Federal Highway. J.C. Park is almost five and a half acres, it's got a nice big open green area right there in the middle, and of course, the interpretive art around the trail there. It's, again, open also from sunrise to sunset. It's got the boardwalk, it's definitely one of our more beautiful parks, given the fact that it's right there on the intercoastal waterway. So with that being the case, what we did, along with our many discussions, was the advisory board requested that I do some research regarding how other cities in the, in our area deal with this situation, and what we found is, there was a fairly mixed bag. For example, the city of West Palm Beach does allow dogs in their parks, as does Palm Beach County, Plantation does not, Del Ray allows them along A-1A, Deerfield Beach does allow them in their parks, Coconut Creek does not, Palm Springs, Lake Worth, Green Acres do allow them, the city of Boca Raton does not, but they have recently opened up a portion of their beach, and of course, Boca does have a dog park. That gives you some sense of what we have in terms of what other cities are doing in our area. Nationwide, I found that to be similar, through our national organization, National Recreation and Park Association, I was able to get feedback from probably a dozen or so other departments throughout the United States, and similar type of feedback. Most communities either allow leashed and licensed dogs in their park and/or they have a dog park, which is, again, a park dedicated solely for dogs, to run off-leash but within a fenced area. So that is the item that the, again, the Recreation and Parks Board asked to bring before you for conversation, for discussion. The parks chosen can certainly be modified in some way, but we wanted to at least get that out there now to get some sense of how the board feel, the commission feels about it. We do have some members of the advisory board that are present, in case you have any questions of them, but with that being said, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Yes, Mr. Merker.
Simply to the point, man and girl's best friend, a dog. Let's throw in seniors, psychologically, medically, one of the best healers for people as we get older, a dog. What makes a bad dog is people, what makes a good dog is the love of people that they put into a dog. I emphatically and definitely believe that there should be dog parks, and I'm in favor of this, for the love of dogs, people have to behave, dogs naturally behave.
Yes, Commissioner Costello.
Thank you, Wally. I have some concerns, as you know, I think I followed them to you, I did get some negative feedback from Boynton Lakes. Was the, any of the HOAs out there, north or south, contacted on this proposal?
I think the advisory board at this point wanted to get some sense of how the commission felt about it, and that was some of the discussions that we did have, whether at some point, whether it be before we came before you or after we came before you, to engage the community, but at this point, we just felt there was at least the starting point. Have a discussion with you guys, see what you think, if you feel that it's appropriate to take it to that next step. If that next step is to get some feedback from the HOAs that may be impacted by that, the board, I think, is very receptive to hosting that type of stakeholder meeting, and we could do that as part of our regularly scheduled Recreation and Parks Advisory Board meetings, or it could be at some other type of forum, but that was something that, yeah, we did indeed consider to be part of our due diligence. J.C. Park is a good example, where we have both Hampshire Gardens and Colonial Club, which are two residential communities that bordered that park, so to some degree, certainly it's, it does warrant some discussion whether that should take place at some point, but again, we wanted to hear from the commission.
And just, I'm just vetting some of my concerns here. The leash law is just about unenforceable. I mean, it's, I've got some statistics, and I think we've given out, and correct me if I'm wrong, if Liz is here, one citation in twenty years in a park for a leash violation. My concern is that we're dedicating these four spaces for dogs on leashes. My belief is that people go to these parks, they're going to unleash the dog, this is one of my concerns, it's just human nature. And there's really no way to enforce it. So what we're encouraging with these four parks is now that people might, it's human nature, saying now Boynton allows dogs in parks, and I know that's not the case, but that might be the perception of the general public, so I want to make that crystal clear that that's not the case. The other thing that I have, another one of my concerns, is that waste stations. We're asking people, we're dedicating these four parks for leashes, and these people, most parks, might drive to these so they can walk their dog in a park setting, but we have no waste stations for them to, and I can't believe that somebody's going to drive to one of these parks with their dog, and I am a dog lover, as you know, I was the advocate for our future dog park here in Boynton Beach, so I'm all for dogs, believe me, I just want that on record. But my point is that these people are going to go to these parks, and there's going to be no facilities there for them to pick up after their dog, and it'd be hard for me to believe that they're going to bring their own bags and put it back in the car and go home. That's another one of my concerns. Another concern is this, the intercoastal. Now, we have some big festivities down there, Fourth of July and such, we're allowing people to bring dogs on leashes. Will this, how we, are we going to encourage that on the Fourth of July, or how do we stop people from bringing the dogs in on the Fourth of July on leashes? These are just some of my concerns. It's a great thing, I think, I think that Boynton Lakes, as you know, I've got a lot of, not a lot of, but I've got several negative emails from there. I believe Boynton Lakes might be a little too small for that, if there's only like three or four parking spaces, if I'm correct, in that area there, which people were concerned about and related to me. So these are some of my concerns. If those concerns can be addressed, and then, you know, I'm all on board for this.
But regretfully, when you're talking about people who are not responsible, your concerns are highly warranted, no doubt about it. What I found, and which surprised me quite a bit, was other than the city of Del Ray, these other cities that do allow dogs at their parks, several do not have waste dispensers, and most of them said it's not been a point of concern for them at all. It may have been just the luck of the draw, it certainly is not a, I wouldn't consider this a viable sample, so I think ultimately, you have cases like you do in Jupiter at their beach where that is self-governed, and if you drop a piece of paper on that beach, you're more than likely will be mugged by those other dog lovers that are using that because they've grown to basically create that sense that you will take care of this facility. But quite honestly, there are certainly many examples out there where unfortunately, yeah, there are a fairly high percentage of the people out there that whether they own dogs or not are not responsible, so whether you have a law that prohibits it or not, they're still going to bring their dogs into these parks. It's something that, it's, that's why, if nothing else, I think we were able to at least let them get some sense of comfort from the board in trying this for a year, and whether we tried it at this park or other parks, I don't know that that's necessarily a major issue at this point. From a staff standpoint, we felt a year would really give us a chance to come to you and say, you know what, yeah, this really worked, and it's not a problem, and we can do it with or without waste pass, or we can come before you in a year and say, you know what, that's punt, it's not going to work, and we just had a very bad experience with it. You can only speculate, but I can tell you, at least from the communities that I touch base with, other than the city of Del Ray Beach, they were like, it hasn't been a problem. The county has allowed dogs at their parks for quite a while now, and in contacting their staff, it was like, no big deal at all, they don't provide dispensers, and it's been not a big deal to them at all. Lake Worth, Palm Springs, Green Acres, they haven't had any problems, but again, who knows? Who knows?
How are we, the intercoastal, I'd be really concerned about, like the Fourth of July festivities down there, people bringing in, we did, I believe we had an incident down there, tragic little incident with a dog-
But that was at Barrier Free-
Barrier Park, rather.
And again, you and I are both dog lovers.
Exactly.
If you're a responsible dog owner, I can't imagine why you would expose your animal to that type of a crowd.
I agree with that a hundred percent, but unfortunately, it happens.
It happens.
That it happens. My recommendation is that if we're going to okay this, I would like to see at least waste stations put in, you know, for pickup purposes, not that everyone will do it, but at least we could encourage that.
I like Commissioner. Let me give everybody a chance. McCray, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to Boynton Lakes Park, I only have one for, one against email that was sent to me. Long as that we place signage up, you know, saying these are the rules for utilizing this park with a dog, I'm in favor of it, I'm just saying, you know, everybody has to be responsible, whether there's a waste station or not, I'm just saying, people now has taken on the responsibility, will they clean up behind their pets, and I'm just saying, you know, I'm willing to give it a shot for one year and see how it works. We have twenty-seven parks, and we only picked these four, I think it's a good ratio to start with.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I too received one email for and one email against. As with the Boynton Beach Fire Rescue for twenty-two years, I probably went on about ten dog bites, including one of myself, but none of them were on leashes. There was no bites from people that had dogs on leashes that I can remember, so I'm okay with this, and I agree with Commissioner Costello that probably we should have waste stations, and I was just wondering if we do have them, who would be responsible for restocking the plastic bags?
That is an item that we did discuss from the standpoint that it's not funding that we have in our budget. Units between three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars, plus fifty to a hundred to install, so for the sake of keeping the math simple, five hundred dollars per unit, a large park may need two, three units. And that's something that, again, we would have to address at some point, how do we fund this, because if, just at four parks, two units per park, it's a couple thousand dollars that I don't have in my budget, but the point is, if it's something that we get a sense that you'd like to move this forward, and that is a stipulation that you would include as part of your recommendation, then, you know, we did discuss with our board that we could get creative and perhaps find a sponsor that could help offset that cost, it's, you know, we've been getting creative for many years here, so just because it's not in our budget doesn't mean that that's a deal breaker. You know, and in many cases, in my research, I found that, you know, all our parks do have garbage cans, again, if it's a responsible owner, you're going to walk around with, you know, disposal bags, and again, I'm preaching to the choir, especially to the vice mayor, but many people will go around, but there are many that don't, but those that do, then dispose them in a garbage bag, in a garbage can, I mean. The units do, certainly by personal intuition, I think, increase the chances that people would dispose of their waste. But I can tell you, in Del Ray, where they have the disposal baskets, they've had mixed results, so again, it's one of those things that's so, you know, it's almost like you need a crystal ball and really get a sense of how people are going to behave, and if you get the bulk of the people that behave and endorse this and take ownership, you're going to find a wonderful scenario where people govern themselves, and if they find somebody that's not being responsible, that they will call them out, but it could easily go the other way. You know, it's just like Disney World, they pick up that trash, it the minute it hits the ground, and people are then far less likely to do it, but if it's not picked up, then it'll continue to accumulate. What I'm telling you is, it's all speculation, see, and but if any of these parks have, create, you know, again, a little bit more apprehension, you could decide, you know, we'd rather not do it at this park, or perhaps suggest another park. We do have twenty-seven parks, certainly some are not logical to even consider, especially the ones that are very, very small, but there are other places that we could consider. The intent was, again, to keep it in the different parts of the city, and to at least be able to get a sense of how is this working.
I had one phone call in opposition at the Boynton Lakes, that's all I got, was one phone call. There, you are going to have to put up about six signs, one in each one of the smaller ones and two in the bigger ones, around, estimated cost about seven hundred dollars, do you have that in your budget? How are you going to pay for them?
We're going to have to, again, if the commission decides that this is something that we want to move forward with, Mayor, I'll have to convene with my advisory board and whether we find a sponsor, whether we try to see if there's something that we don't or need to spend, or we can defer to a following year. We may find some, you know, existing funds within our current operational budget, but-
Well, I think what you're proposing here is a trial period, and I know that a lot of restaurants in town right now have dogs outside, they let you bring to their tables and chairs, and I have not seen a problem there yet, I've been at a lot of them, so I guess people must, either they have them do their duty before they get there, or they take care of it as soon as it happens, but I haven't seen a problem, and I've been at a lot of them restaurants. So I think what we're talking about is a trial period here, and I guess if we try it and in a year we're having problems, we just reverse it and cancel it, that'd be one way to go. Commissioner Merker.
A lot of words were said regarding this. What's surprising me somewhat is, and I agreed with, I'm sorry, I was going to say Commissioner Costello, Vice Mayor Costello, when he was the one that initiated this idea and pushed this idea, and we voted in favor of this idea. So what I'm hearing is, there's a learning curve, there's a responsibility, the responsibility is to the people, which is always the case. I heard from the mayor, and I concur with the mayor, and I especially concur with Commissioner McCray. It's the love, it's the passion, it's part of your family, anything can go wrong, you buy a new car, and you got a flat tire, you buy a new car and it stops on the highway. So the idea that this was brought up last year and we voted for it, to me, what's the question? Anything is a trial period when you start something new, so I think we should move forward and work together, and there's another simple thing. Police Chief Katz, I'm going to pick on you. Goes like this. Police Chief Katz, if you've ever heard him at a meeting- Police Chief Katz, if you've ever heard him at a meeting, he's eloquent. May I suggest that when you go into the different communities to remind them for the love of the dog, and for the love of passion, and for the love of caring for something that's alive, they must take care of it. And remember, pick up and throw away. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
One more, one more.
You waiting for a motion, because I'm going to have a motion.
Go ahead, make a motion, and then I'll get discussion, I'll get discussion.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to offer a motion that this trial period proceeds for one year without the waste disposal bags, but with a set of rules at the entrance to each park, and hopefully that you all could find your $700.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Commissioner Costello.
I, I'm inclined to go with this. I would just like to see if you would explore the possibilities, and maybe through sponsorships, help us with maybe with those waste stations. Absolutely. And I, and I would also add that, as a director and responsible for organizing the July 4th, as you indicated, I, I would certainly be willing to discuss the fact that for an event like that, especially last year, if you were there, there was literally no moved, place to move. If you put a dog under that kind of stressful situation, that's when a dog's going to bite.
It's not safe for the dog.
I would rather, in events like that, have the ability to say, look, no, unless it's a service dog.
Excuse me, excuse me, the motion was to do it for a year without waste stations. You're trying to amend the motion saying to go out and look for it, so I don't know if the motioner would agree to that.
Let's amend that.
He said, you're not the motion maker.
Sure.
Anton, 234 Southeast Second Avenue. At the Madison Center is a waste disposal, I think it was a trial, unfortunately, it's empty, but for a long time, right up front of the Madison Center, running 4th Street, is a waste station holder bag. It doesn't actually have the trash can, because you got other trash cans. You provide the bags, so somewhere in the city, somebody has some information on that. As far as the parks, I walk my dog by Dewey Park, and anytime I can, I try to pick up trash, and I want to walk in and pick up more trash, and I can't, because they don't allow dogs. But it's always been a good thing, and you can't always, like I said, you can't judge by the few. There's going to be always a bad apple. Go for the majority, which is what we're based on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Charles Cantor, 2905 South Greenleaf Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. I'm the president of Parkside Homeowners Association. We have 272 families in this association, mostly very young families with very young children and very young and mid-sized dogs. And we've gone over this problem about dogs constantly, and what we decided about waste disposal was that if we put those things up, I first saw them in California when I was visiting, if we put them up, we change the responsibility of the dog from the owner to the association, and we decided we did not want to do that. And frankly, we, yes, we have an occasional problem with waste not being picked up. We find that what, in almost every case, the owner of the dog tells the teenage kid to take the dog out for a walk, and a teenage kid thinks it's icky, you know what I mean? But otherwise, we don't have a problem. And of course, we've got little kids, we've got, you know, toddlers and munchkins and pre-teens and teens, and they're dogs, and everybody gets along very, very well. And we really, we've discussed this, I am a member of the Recreation and Parks Board, and we've discussed this at great length, and I think we've also discussed ways that we can monitor this. For instance, we could have people, you want to take your dog to the park? Go onto the city website and sign a pledge that you will keep your dog on a leash, and you will carry a plastic bag with you to pick up. And I think, as Wally described, that, that this is going to be a wonderful thing for the city, and will really help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With Draw Hey, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue, Boynton Beach. Just a couple of observations. I have no problem with the trial period, but as I walk around the city and drive around the city, someone set it up for you, you're always going to have some knuckleheads. And there are some that I know of that have these, and nothing against any particular dog, but just, I just happen to recognize that they were pit bulls, okay? Mean pit bulls. And I was a little afraid to even walk by them. I'm concerned, as Vice Mayor was pointing out, when we have these functions and you allow these people to bring their dogs, I'm not so sure they're going to always be able to control them. So I guess the question that I have, from a legal liability standpoint, what liability are we imposing upon the city, if any, along those lines?
When the city creates a situation where risk is increased, the city has increased liability.
So I guess the other part of that question is, from the committee's standpoint, what factors are you going to be using to determine whether or not you continue or not continue to do this after a year's time? Just, just to have some feel of where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, I'm 656 Northwest First Avenue, Boynton Beach here. Just a couple comments. I would think instead of four parks, you might take two parks, something a little bit less. If people know about it, they're going to go to those parks. I never knew there was, I was raised here, okay? I never knew that you couldn't take your dog to a park. I mean, as long as you have it on a leash, I thought that was okay. So for a resident who's been here all her life, I never knew that there was, that you couldn't take your dog to the park, because where we live, there's dogs that go in the park all the time with their, with their owners, and like, how many people have ever been? You said one was, one ticket. I mean, normally, police officers don't even, even look at that. My suggestion is, I think it's a great idea, maybe partner with like Target or someplace like that, that will, in that area out there, that maybe you could establish a dog park for dogs only, or have one or two parks instead of four parks that have good parking and that people can go to and know that you can bring your dogs to it.
There is going to be a dog park constructed behind Best Buy and Target. It's in the, the guys already agreed to do that. It's in the works. But that's just for dogs, dog park.
Right. They, you let them loose and they can, they can move around.
Yeah, they'd be fenced in.
Right, right.
Thank you.
With a, with a leash law, if, if you're going to try it, my opinion is you try it with, with one park, or possibly two, but not four. I mean, you got to see how many people are going to bring their dogs there. If it gets overcrowded or whatever, then you're fine. I mean, then you go to, go to two more. But why put it in the budget when the budget is stretched already for four parks? That's, it just kind of, you know, Wally was saying, he just doesn't have the money. And even if you partner with a company, you're still going to have to come up with a lot of money, and even your liability is going to go up. So it was just, just a quick thought.
Thank you. Yes, sir, did you want to speak?
Hi, I don't know if you remember me, my name is William Spellman from Cape Cod Lobster Roll Company. Oh, yes. Yeah, I've been over in Fort Myers. I just got finished doing the spring training over there for the last couple of months, and I'm there until the end of, of May. And I was just wondering, I, I was, I requested a variance. I never hear for anything from anybody about this. But what I'd like to do is take my lobster bus over here and bring it home.
Are you here to talk about the dog park? Are you here to talk about the dogs? You want to dress the dog park here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, what I'd like to do is, I haven't heard from anybody, and I'd like to know what, if there was any discussion on my variance for my, my lobster bus, or...
We're not discussing that now. We're talking about having dogs in the park on leashes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're not talking to that.
I can't understand what you're...
We're discussing having, allowing dogs in our parks on leashes. Has nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Okay? That was under public audience.
I'm sorry.
You need to bring that up under public audience. No problem. Okay. I do have a motion on the floor, and a second is, all in favor?
Well, what, could you read the motion? I, I...
The motion was, the motion was to allow it for a one-year trial period with no waste facility.
And was there a motion?
And there was a second.
But with a set of rules at each...
A set of rules at each park, signed with the rules at each park. You, there wasn't amended one, you just suggested that he go out and try and find people to, to maybe finance the waste stuff, but the, the motion was to not do the waste, let people bring their own.
Yes.
So, and I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion as unanimous, a one-year trial period. Thank you. Okay, next is, oh, I see, I had, yeah, no, I'm going to get to it here. Hang on, I just changed my thing. Discuss request for Sister Cities Committee to send a delegation to Lakai, Haiti on May 1 through the 5th in 2014. Is there somebody here from Sister Cities that want to address that?
Here we go.
Here we go.
Julia Avrells, President of Sister City, Boynton Beach.
Address.
Actually, my business address, 4781 North Congress Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426.
Thank you.
The invitation came of, then, when we discussed the idea of doing something with the Sister City of Haiti, and that started from the first visit a couple of years ago, when the, when we signed the agreement with the Sister City of Lakai. They came here, and they visited the city of Boynton Beach and this, the waste management, the water plant, and also the police station, and also the fire station. And they have learned a lot in the process, and wanted to have the opportunity to use the expertise that you guys have here to help them facilitate a fire station at home, I mean, in Haiti. And with that said, after a few years, the subject came back up again, and we discussed it with Chief Carter, and the, I mean, he gave us some ideas as far as what we can do. Unfortunately, we didn't have the right person in Haiti to give us the feedback that's supposed to, and we discussed with Chief Carter, would it be possible for someone who already has the expertise on how to start a fire station, you know, what's the best way to do it, so we don't waste our time? And he was willing to go, and we definitely, we get the formal invitation from the city of Lakai, and that's how we presented to the, to Chief Carter and the city, this way so we can send someone over there to evaluate the situation, see how we can best help.
Okay, we have, in the budget, we had $1,500 budgeted to support Sister Cities. As of today, we have spent just under $1,000 of that $1,500 so far in support of Sister Cities. So we have about $500 left. If, if there's a group that wants to go, and I think for one individual, is the numbers I saw was between $500, $500 to $600 for travel and lodging and et cetera, no other extras. Commissioner Fitzpatrick has been our liaison to Sister Cities. He's been working with them the whole time. So if, if the city wanted to send someone, we could maybe afford to send that one person, and I would think that that would be Commissioner Fitzpatrick, if he wanted to go, because that's the money we have left.
Can you, well, I would like somebody from the fire department, if, if this is the initiative that started, that, to go, because that's the whole point of it. I'd like to, you know, see if we could provide some material service to the city of Lakai. And at one point, there's a firefighter from West Palm who, who tries to collect surplus fire equipment that's no longer serviceable for, for our, you know, our rules and regulations, but still, you know, it's better than nothing. And he's been shipping a lot of that back to Haiti. And so if there's only money for one person, and I'd like it to be a fire rep, I would still go, because I did make a campaign promise that I'd go to Haiti, so I'd be willing to pay my own way.
Chief, we have a chief here, chief, did you want to have some input?
Ray Carter, Fire Chief here in the city of Boynton Beach. Again, the, the program has been moving forward very slowly. Again, the offer was made by the Sister Cities organization to try to put this together to go down there. I'm willing to make the trip, as long as the timing is appropriate. You know, I know far enough ahead of time that I can plan that, and, and then we can certainly schedule it if we have the money in the budget to do so. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, whether he pays for it, or I pay for it, or whoever pays for it, you know, I think it's important that we go down there with more than one person to, to deal with the political ties, as well as deal with the issue of building an appropriate fire facility or emergency response facility. Again, Nate Lassour, who's a lieutenant in West Palm, he may want to travel as well, because his wife is from Lakai, and, and, you know, so we may be able to put together actually a little bit bigger delegation with more people to get more done, if we're going to make the trip. I'm in support of going, yes.
Well, it's, they're talking about May, is that enough time for you to appoint?
Again, the dates that were given to me in May are not optional for me.
Okay.
Because I have previous plans, I've already paid for other airline tickets to go elsewhere, and things of that nature.
Well, is there somebody else in your department that you would recommend?
Well, I mean, again, we could send another representative, yes, and, and I can check and have an answer by tomorrow to see if anybody would be available for those dates.
I wouldn't mind, I don't have a problem with using our $500 for a Boynton person, but I'm not, I would not want to spend $500 for this West Palm person.
No, absolutely. You know, I, I think Nate, Nate would probably travel on his own anyhow. Like I said, his wife is from Lakai. He visits the country a couple of times a year. He's, he's got an entire organization that ships surplus supplies down there to different locations, so I, I think he would have other means to pay for his trip.
Well, I would, I guess I would suggest that, then, I'm just throwing this out for open, but I would suggest that if they, you do get a group that, that can go, you guys put that together, that the city would, would give the rest of what we ever have left in the budget towards that operation, towards the one person, whoever wants to go.
We do, we do have a couple of firefighters who do speak Creole as well, and are, are, again, their heritage is of Haitian descent. So we may be able to arrange for one of those to be, or accompany Commissioner Fitzpatrick as well down there, which, which again, would go a long ways to bridging some of the, the language barrier that may be there in trying to communicate, how to operate, and things of that nature. Fitzpatrick?
The, the, I was at the Sister City board meeting when they were picking May 8th, or May 1st, and there was a couple of reasons. Well, one, because I pointed out, you know, we needed, couldn't conflict with this meetings, but the other thing was, apparently, the travel to Haiti is very big in the summer because of people are out of school, and there, and there's a lot of, so the prices actually go up, and then plus it starts getting hot. So they figured you had to do it in May or the fall, and they, because they made the effort now, they wanted originally in March, they would prefer to have it in May than like, wait till September or October. So that's how the May 1st date came up, and to push it back was start getting into the more expensive airline summer months. So, see, I, I'd like to keep it, if possible, to that May period for that reason, and, you know, Chief Carter's already committed, but, you know, there's some battalion chiefs and captains who, who know their stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I, I'm in favor, excuse me, of Commissioner Fitzpatrick going, along with a representative from the Boynton Beach Fire Department, and the $500 that we have in the budget that will be left, I think it should be divvied up so that they don't have to spend all of their money. I'm just saying to send those two delegates to represent the city of Boynton. This is our sister city, we voted for it, and we need to support it as well as represent it.
And a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion, a second, and then a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion as unanimous.
Mayor, I'll have an answer by tomorrow as to who that representative might be from the fire department, that will accommodate.
Well, if you want to work with Commissioner Fitzpatrick, then we'll let him take the lead on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
If we could have Nate, there would be a translator.
Okay. Okay, the next item is to discuss a possible drug testing of elected officials per the request of Commissioner Merker.
Thank you very much. Uh, the first thing I'll say, because it was raised, and, uh, Vice Mayor Casella wanted it, the cost to be tested, it's $50 a person. Okay, now let's get to the nitty gritty. The nitty gritty, the reason why this became personal to me in the sense of interest. It was brought forth to share, uh, by two representatives, one a Democrat and one a Republican. So, to me, that's right away, that's a good thing. It washes off if it's a Democrat or Republican issue. But I think it's, what's more important to that is what we, the commission of Boynton Beach, and what we stand for. Number one, there's grassroots movements, there's beginning movements. And to me, the idea that I, as an elected representative, an honored position, a privileged position, gets to this point, wants to be able to relate and touch all the constituents in a way that all men are created equal. And when city employees have to be tested, or people in the private industry, uh, need to be tested, why should not we, as representatives of the people, not be tested? There's been discussion, and the biggest question here that comes forth is the Fourth Amendment, having to do with personal and conducting search and seizure. I think it's a marvelous, a marvelous discussion, a marvelous way of communicating, that's the real word, between elected officials and the people. A drug test is essential, $50 a person is not overbearing. I think we, the city of Boynton Beach, should step forward, and if this bill is pushed and accepted, that we should volunteer. I have nothing to fear, and I'm sure none of the other commissioners or mayor has anything to fear. So, we're taking a lead, we're taking a responsibility to the people, for the people. So, there's this comfort zone that we're no different than you, we're the same. And just remember one thing, none of us are gonna be here forever, up here. And this is an important issue, because people who have drug problems, just like the mayor brought up the idea of mental health, the problem of drugs very often is because of mental health. So, I think we, if nothing else, should vote and say, let's move forward, let's see what the bill becomes, if it becomes a law, and we're supportive of it, because we're behind and for the people.
I would, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, we all have our rights, you know, to say what we want to say, but I perceive this as being different. I'm just saying, we are elected officials, but when we start sending out, you know, messages to the public that we are volunteering to be drug tested, et cetera, I'm just saying, what are we sending to the public? Are they saying, are they on drugs? I'm just saying, people are so apt to take the wrong course. I don't want to be drug tested, I'm not a drug addict, and I don't, I'm not in favor of it, that's all I need to say.
I want to share, uh, with the commission, which I think might help you in making these decisions, an article that appeared in paper on Wednesday, March 19th, um, titled, "Florida Officials Addicted to Useless Drug Testing." "There's nothing we like better here in Florida than another futile attempt to round up some urine." Florida's, Florida, the most urine-jonesing state in the country, might as well put a specimen cup on the state flag. Our Governor Rick Scott, who has dabbed, dabbled in the urine farming business, arrived in office with some grand plans for mandatory urine testing of hundreds of thousands of Floridians. So, collection efforts have been waged against all state workers and welfare recipients. These drug testing business ventures didn't pass constitutional muster when they were challenged, and eventually scuttled by the courts. But that's neither here nor there. The urine collection fever is strong here, and if you're only trying to score some political points, who cares if it's unconstitutional? All the credit is doled out for proposing it, not actually making it happen. And so, here we go again. We're apparently out of pariahs, so state legislators are now thinking about urine testing each other. State Representative Dane Eagle, from Cape Coral, has proposed the Drug-Free Public Officials Act, which would require anyone holding an elected federal office, a state or local constitutional office, or an elected municipal, local school district, or independent special district office to be drug tested no later than 60 days after taking office, and no later than 60 days after reelection or reappointment to that office. Like the previous efforts, nothing will come of this. Under the proposed Florida bill, public officials who test positive for drugs have to take a drug treatment program. Those who refuse the drug test or enroll in a drug treatment program must resign. Georgia already went down this road 24 years ago, when it tried to make drug testing addition for seeking public office. A challenge to the Georgia law went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Courts, which ruled eight to one, in Chandler versus Miller, the law was unconstitutional. Then there, there's a bit of ridiculousness in the companion bill. The results of testing in the Drug-Free Public Officials Act must be kept from the public. So, if you're keeping score, we'll gladly violate your privacy rights under the Constitution by testing you, but guard your privacy when it comes to keeping your drug hidden from the people you represent. As it stands now, it's just another way to collect a bunch of clean urine from a whole new bun, batch of Floridians. And that's the real chilling effect to the reputation of Florida lawmakers. The fact that they can't seem to break their debilitating addiction to urine collection. I think this article speaks volumes. It says it's unconstitutional, that's good enough for me, that's where I'm at, I will not support this. After that, I'll give, I'll come back to you. Yep.
Well, I was gonna say a few things, but not anywhere as Elko and his friend Cherabino. So, uh, I think, you know, he, he might have a big head anyway, I don't think, you know, being mentioned here is gonna help that.
Did you want to say anything?
Doesn't deserve anything.
Okay, Commissioner Merker will back to you.
I totally disagree. What do I have to hide? What do you have to hide? It's a, it's representing who we are. Yes, this Chandler, I have a right here to, 1997 Chandler versus Miller. The bottom line is, what are we? We represent the people. Drugs is a problem. We are the leaders, we are elected to be leaders. Woodrow Wilson, I love this corollary, this example of what he said, with the Constitution and the human mind. What he said, thank you, that's all right, what he said, the Constitution and the human mind are very similar. They're similar in the sense that when the Constitution was written, it wasn't declarative, it was to be interpreted. And when he talks about the human mind, he said, the wonderful thing about the human mind, it goes around and around. And in order to develop, you constantly learn. Because supposedly, we learn from the past, but if we live in the past, we die in the past. And that's the beauty of our government, the interpretation. Each generation changes. And the idea of drug testing, an elected official admitting and showing who he is and what he is, urine, thank God we can urinate. Thank God we can urinate, okay? And be healthy, happy, and wise, because cancer happens. But, more important, the ability of urinate, that that urination represents cleanliness, and that urination represents what we are for in front of the people, that we are just like you. We are healthy, both physically and mentally. So, to deriate, that, and, and to question, a simple test, and call it so personal, I find ludicrous, ridiculous. That could be humorous to you, but the facts are that when you're elected, I know different than you. And if you could be tested, then why shouldn't I be tested? So, there's a fair, equal balance.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mayor, um, there's no, uh, motion or second, there's no public comment until that occurs, unless you waive the rules today.
Is there a motion? I'll, I'll pass it. No, you want to make a motion?
No, I just, what I, the reason I put this on is not to rush, this is, this is a thought process, and that's the problem. Not everything has to be voted upon immediately, it should be thought about. And I want the response of the people, just like with the dog issue. We got two responses, one yes, one no. But this is more important, okay? So, I want, I want the people to say, hey, Commissioner Merker, are you really crazy? I know you'll say that, uh, Mr. Katz, because that's all you ever say. But, other than that, am I crazy? Am I crazy that I represent you, that my mind is clear? I don't think that's a bad idea.
Well, with the possibility of pissing you off, I'm going to make a motion that we do not...
I don't think that's humorous, I think that's, that's belittling.
I make a motion that we deny drug testing for elected officials.
So, you can keep talking like I can keep talking. That's belittling. That's belittling.
I'm gonna second that motion.
Is that the way you speak? Is that your vocabulary?
That was meant to be.
No, that wasn't meant to be funny.
No, it was meant to be.
That wasn't meant to be, because some of our, our representatives, both Democratic and Republican, also think that it's a good idea.
Your auto, Mr. Merker.
So, you as a mayor, representing people who may be for or against, that's belittling.
Mr. Merker, your auto, auto.
Second it?
Can I speak yet? I second it.
Okay.
We need to call it.
We have a roll call on that motion?
No, you, public audience.
There's a motion and a second, now the public comment is permitted.
My first time up here.
Thank you, Mr. Charoff. David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane, our fair city. For purposes of full disclosure, unlike Bill Clinton, I didn't hail. Mr. Merker, please, please tell us this is not a cruel April Fool's joke, bring this in front of the commission today. Please. You've had some half-baked ideas, like hundred-story buildings, and wanting to get rid of the sunshine law. And, and of course, you did mention how you want to reach out and touch your constituents, we know how you like to do that. But having said that, this, this is the most ridiculous thing to come forward in, in, in front of this commission in years. And, um, I look forward to you not approving this. Thank you.
No other people's talk, no call? Anybody else in the audience would like to comment on this?
Steve Anton, 234 Southeast 2nd Avenue, Boynton Beach. Um, I worked in a hospital, I had to be urine tested. It was a drug-free zone, and that scared me because we have a pharmacy there. But people in responsibility positions, decision-making positions, doctors, nurses, techs. I was in the military, random testing. All of a sudden, we had to be tested. Okay, again, we were in responsible positions. We were given weapons, we're given bombs, whatever. We make this as a joke, we make it as funny, but that testing was there for a reason. Because, again, it's a responsibility. And again, it may be silly, it may be crazy, but it says this. If I've gotta be tested for jobs I work at, and yes, it's, you can say it's unconstitutional, but we still have to do it.
I didn't say that, the court said that.
Well, you read it.
Yep.
But the question is, is the city commission, and again, your guys are gonna vote against it, I can already see it in your faces. But what I want to ask is, do you want to lead by saying, I'll voluntarily do this? It's not gonna hurt anything. That's the biggest question. If somebody says, I'm gonna do it, and I'm gonna do it voluntarily, that says a lot about your leadership and your responsibility. Like I said, that's what your job is. It's not about Constitution, it's about leadership. Sometimes you forget that. This is a leadership step, as crazy as it may seem. But if the people out here that voted for you guys have to do it, then it shouldn't be wrong that you should do it. You should voluntarily say yes, because again, the people out here do have to do that. Did you, Mayor, when you were in the Air Force, were there, were there urine testing in the Air Force, when you were in during your times?
Yes.
I, and, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Emily Little, 113 Southeast 30th Avenue. I'm ashamed of all of you up there. How, how, why? It makes me wonder, as a citizen, what are you hiding? Why don't you want to be tested? Our children have to be tested. I mean, when I see all of you shaking your head, rolling your eyes up here, this is a very serious, serious state when it comes to drugs. Do you think nobody in this room does it? Why are there police then? What do you think, back there, Mr. Police Officer? I think it takes anybody. It is a real issue in the state of Florida. And I don't understand why you're up there opposing this. I, make me understand it. Make these people that are, we can't believe your response to this. I applaud you, David Merker.
Call on the motion?
Please, please state the motion.
Please state the motion. The motion was to deny the drug testing of elected officials.
I second it.
Please second it. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Pathetically opposed.
Order one. Order one. Okay, that takes us to, uh, discuss term limits, separating terms served as a commissioner and terms served as mayor per the request of Commissioner McCray.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had this placed on for discussion, because I, I know that term limits for elected officials, like the commissioners, that was put out before the voters, and they said that, you know, we could serve two consecutive term limits, that's two consecutive three-year terms. I, I need to hear from legal, I'm just saying, is there anything that we can do, ramification? I'm just saying, that we could, uh, say that anyone who has served as a commissioner, can they go at the next election and serve as mayor of our city? And if so, what should we do to get it approved, to get it on the ballot, et cetera?
Currently, under the terms of the charter, that could not happen. It would take a charter amendment to do it, which means an ordinance, uh, calling for a referendum election to amend the charter.
Okay, since, since I had it brought up, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, no problem. Since I had it brought up, I'm just saying, you know, well, how quickly can you bring that information back to us, you know, so that we could look at it?
Uh, I need a little bit, uh, clarity on the, on the exact outcome that the commission would be asking the, uh, the public to vote on. But, uh, the ordinance could be ready at the next commission meeting.
Okay, I agree everybody else, and I will give clarity the best I can.
Well, first of all, wanna see if the commission, if we have, if they want to go that route, do you want it to be brought back? He's suggesting that they bring back a, a ordinance to that effect. I second it. I have a motion, I assume that was a motion, and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I thought this needed to be a charter amendment, so if you have, bring it up for a vote, then it needs to go before the, the public and, and be voted upon. So, the earliest time you can do that, unless you have a special election, is two years from now. So, I don't see a reason to bring it up now. Usually, don't, isn't the way it works is before it comes up, you appoint a charter review committee to go over stuff, and then, and then let them make recommendations, and then the city commission approves or disproves, should they put it on the ballot? I thought that's the way, I've seen it happen before.
Commissioner, uh, if I could respond to that, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, the city commission can originate charter amendments through the process of adopting an ordinance, calling for a referendum election. Uh, the city commission could also establish a charter review committee to make recommendations on issues just, just like that. Uh, but ultimately, the authority to ask the public to vote on an issue rests with the city commission only, not a committee.
The also, uh, if you didn't wait for an election, it'd have to be a special, you have to pay for a special election, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, unless it comes onto a general election.
Uh, it could also be on a November ballot, can it?
That, that is the next election that it could be on.
And could it be on the 2010? I mean, 2014?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and may I continue?
Sure.
Okay, uh, I'm... I, I'm somewhat, I have a smile on my face, because in 2013, when I brought up the subject matter of term limits, how do I say it? I was ignored. No one even wanted to discuss it. And what I found very interesting is, at the last meeting, that Vice Mayor, then Woodrow Hay, was serving, he brought it up. So I'd be curious, because it was brought up before, and you were against it, and you were against, against it. I was wondering, what is the purpose, and what was the purpose? And I'd love you to give me a response. What was the purpose of you bringing it up? Of changing the mindset when it, when it would have been easier and would have been able, we had more time to discuss it, let alone the type of term limits, which, you know, the idea of term limits with presidency was the 22nd Amendment, which limited it to two terms. So, you know, I'm trying to understand the mindset, the purpose of why all of a sudden, because it hasn't been stated by new again Commissioner McCray-
I could state it.
Excuse me, please. Or former Vice Mayor Hay, why the enlightenment? What bolt of lightning hit you that all of a sudden you realize that this could be good for the city? So I'd love your response.
Let me just comment, first of all, you brought up eliminating term limits.
I brought up to discuss it, and I didn't get the respect to, to take it further, because I was going to give history, not only federally, but also statewide, which again, no one wanted to hear.
Well, we voted against discussing eliminating term limits.
You ignored it. There was no vote taken.
Okay, well, either way, we didn't want to go there.
Well, that's, yeah, but not what comes up.
So, no, it ain't. What's coming up now is completely different.
Oh, it is.
What's coming up now is that if a commissioner serves his two terms, then he can turn around and, and run for mayor without sitting out a while. That's what's being discussed here. Is that correct, Ms. McCray?
Thank you. And, 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 you know, Mr. Mayor, you know, let, let me serve notice, you know, while I'm sitting up here, this is not my first time up here representing citizens of Boynton. You know, I've already served terms prior to this, I have a history. And Commissioner Merker, I'm just saying, you saying, what is the urgency? It was put on the agenda before-
I didn't say that. That's not my wording.
Okay, whatever you said, okay, that's-
There's a big difference.
Sir, excuse me. Whatever you said, okay, the records will speak, okay? Right now, I'm speaking. Okay, what was stated was that when Vice Mayor Hay was up here, he wanted to have it discussed. The election occurred during the transition. I was the newly-elected commissioner. I still requested what he requested, and there's nothing wrong with me coming up here, sir, and requesting something to move it forward, and that's why, what I did. And there's no urgency, as you could use the word urgency, but there is a need.
I'm not questioning you. How's that? You weren't here in 2013, and in fact, I backed what you're, you suggested.
I sit in, I sit in the audience, sir.
I didn't question you being here. You didn't hear. You're not listening.
Okay.
I heard what I wanted to hear.
No, you hear what you wanted. Thank you. You hear what you want. That's a big difference.
Does the commission wish to have the attorney bring something back into this effect? Is that the-
I make that motion to the attorney.
We have a motion and a second, I think, before that, did we?
I second it.
I need two points of, of clarification, please, to properly draft something for you to look at. Would it apply to any member of this sitting commission? Or would it be delayed to be implemented beyond the term of the current commission?
Does our, I don't care one way or the other.
I don't care one way or the other.
I could show it to you in both formats if you want to see it that way. Okay, I'll, I'll provide an alternate provision, and then, the result, as I understand it, would be that a commissioner can serve two terms, immediately run for mayor, and serve two additional terms for a total of four terms.
Right.
But somebody who runs for the first time only for mayor is limited to two terms as mayor.
Correct.
Same, same for commissioners, so.
Correct.
It's only in the combination of commission to mayor that you-
Commission want to go to mayor.
Four, four terms.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the public?
Good evening again, David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane, Our Fair City. You know, there's no such thing as being a, a little bit pregnant, and this is what I would consider an end-around term limits. I served on the charter review committee. We had six laborious meetings about the charter. We just, we as a committee, we brought the commission, said that eliminating term limits was not a good idea, and that, and the commission, you know, went along with that. The city numerous, several times, has voted down extending term limits in any way, shape, or form, many times. And Mr. Charoff brings up a good point, that any time the charter amendment has gone before the public, even though it was defeated, that any of the sitting commissioners at the time would not benefit from any extension of term limits. And if you're gonna go forward with this, and I hope you don't, because I don't think it's right, it's an end-around, that the language should contain where any members of the sitting commission would not be able to afford themselves of the new charter amendment. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to one. Okay. Legal, proposed ordinance number 14-002 on second reading.
Motion to remove from the table for discussion.
I have a motion, is there a second? Is the motion removed from the table? Is there a second to remove that from the table? I have a motion second, all in favor? Aye. So the motion unanimous. Legal?
Yes, sir.
These next three, A, B, and C, I think are all same thing. Did you want to advise us on anything?
Um, A and B are, but let me, um, let me start with ordinance 14-002.
Excuse me, can I just remove B off the table as well? Motion to remove B as well off the table, so be, be clear.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, I have a motion second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Aye, so the motion unanimous.
No, I oppose.
So the motion passes four to one.
Ordinance 14-002, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, rescinding ordinance 13-014, which changed the land use designation for a parcel of land located at 125 East Ocean Avenue, from public and private governmental, institutional, to mixed use, restoring public and private governmental, institutional land use to the property, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Let me just make this comment, because these are, this is connected to item B in this regard only. They're separate issues, but are connected in this regard. Both the land use on the property and the historic designation were tied to an agreement with a developer that did, that did not happen. The city commission actually denied a rezoning and a site plan that came in combination with this first item, the change in land use designation. It's unlikely that that agreement will be revived in any manner. There's litigation pending over it, but it seems appropriate to restore both the land use and later on the second ordinance, the status of the property is not historic property, to the position that it was prior to that agreement and prior to the commission's action on that agreement, essentially bringing the public-private, private enterprise to an end.
So your advice is to return it to its original?
Yes, sir. My advice is to pass ordinance 14-002 on second reading.
Okay, Commissioner Merker?
My record shows that I was the only one initially to vote against the land use. And then, because of our lawsuit, because of Treasure Coast, because of the people of the city starting to talk up and say, can we develop this area, which the city owns, and potentially keep the face of the city, uh, of the, the high school, I'm sorry, or part of the high school? Legally, what I'm hearing, and please, Jim, tell me I'm right or wrong, is you feel it's a detriment that if we keep the land use as it, as it was for multi-use, instead of bringing it back to public use, that potentially legally, this is detrimental to the city? Is that a fair way of expressing it?
No, my, my opinion is, it's better to restore the property to what its land use was, because the purpose for changing it in the first place was never accomplished.
Wasn't accomplished by the developer? Or wasn't accomplished by what?
It wasn't accomplished because the proposed project did not go forward by vote of the commission.
Okay, and please define for me and the people that the lawsuit that we have pending is on what two issues?
Uh, there's two lawsuits pending. There's a breach of contract lawsuit-
Okay.
-which asserts that the city breached a contract with the developer by not rezoning property. That lawsuit speaks not at all to the issue of the land use designation. It speaks to the breach of contract arising from the failure to approve the rezoning. So this ordinance that would restore the land use has no bearing on that lawsuit at all, in my opinion. The second lawsuit is a writ of certiorari that were, a court is being asked to require the city to reconduct the public hearing, at which the city commission denied the rezoning and denied the site plan. The reason the passage of this ordinance would benefit that issue is if, in the situation, were a court agreed with the plaintiff in that lawsuit, and asked the city to reconsider the rezoning and the site plan, that the city would be in a better position to consider all three, including the land use. So by restoring the land use back to where it was, if for any reason it was returned to the city for reconsideration, you'd reconsider all three, the same way you originally did.
Site plan, the three areas, the site plan, the rezoning, and the land use. The site plan and the rezoning, I think the terminology is quasi, and you're saying, or I believe you're saying, that the land use is legal. And by leaving it as we have it now, meaning for, um, um, multi-use, that's not the right word, but I'll use it for now, I think you know what I mean, is detrimental to the city in a lawsuit?
Um, the, the designation of land use is not legal, it's legislative.
Okay.
So there's a different standard of review when a, when a city acts on a legislative issue, reviewed by a court as a quasi-judicial. I think that restoring the land use puts the property back into the configuration that it was with respect to land use, zoning, and site plan, the latitude not having occurred.
Well, let me ask you-
So I, I think it's a benefit to the city to do that.
Okay, but let me ask you a question, not being a lawyer. The idea that it's been by the commission, it's been, it's been bantered from the left side to the right side, and the right side to the left side, as far as how the commission is voting, that's not detrimental in our case?
I don't think it is.
Okay. It's that simple?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion on proposed ordinance number 14-002 on second reading?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Yes, well, it has nothing to do right now, this, this has to do with changing the land use designation is all, has nothing to do with the high school.
Mayor, can I just say this word to the public? On all issues that are before the commission on the agenda, there is no public input until there's a motion and a second. And then, items on the agenda such as second reading of an ordinance are open for public comment.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Anybody in the public wish to address this issue?
You have to identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Terry Imes, 656 Northwest 1st Avenue, Boynton Beach. Does this mean that you're gonna take the historic?
No, it has nothing to do with the historic, that's the next item.
Okay.
Or third item.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Slow mark.
I'm down to my old age. Mark Carrot George, 248 Main Boulevard. I understand where Jim's trying to go with this, to, to benefit the city, but I still have some concerns with this change, because of the pending litigation and because of what we are paying $58,000 to Treasure Coast with. We are all meeting with Treasure Coast individually, including myself, I've already met with them, and what they're doing is they're pulling together all of our ideas and trying to come up with recommendations and options to bring before you. And when you start setting things kind of in stone, it starts to limit your options. And that's why I have some concerns with this. I understand Jim's, Jim's argument with this. You know, you're gonna vote, you know, on the issue, but I do have some concerns, and I, I, I wish this had just stayed table, to be very candid about it. And that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
It has nothing to do with the changing whatever Treasure Coast presents, because we can always redo the land use for anything we want. They came up with a good idea, we can make that land use available.
I understand that option's there, I just don't want to start tying their hands-
Well, it doesn't tie their hands, that's what I'm saying.
When they're looking at what, what it's zoned at currently.
Doesn't matter.
Steve Anton, 234 Southeast 2nd Avenue. Mr. Chernoff, would it be a benefit to just table this and wait? Or what is the pros and cons of either tabling it and waiting, because there is no rush, or keeping it? Is there a rush to do this? What is their benefit?
Mayor, may I respond to that?
Yes.
I'll answer some of that. My opinion is, this is the right time to take action on this ordinance, and I think it benefits the city's position in the litigation. Beyond that, I'm not gonna get into the, the details why, because there's litigation pending.
That's my question. If there's litigation pending, you think this is gonna help it? I'm just wondering what the opposition would say, because like I said, if you, usually if you have litigation involved, you're the expert. I'm just wanna make sure that if we tabled this and waited, would that be a better option?
His answer was no.
The answer was no.
Right.
Okay, when this litigation is finished, this conversation will continue.
Please.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I was the only one of the four who, or five, to voted for things to continue on. And the reason I'm voting for this to go back to where it was is so that if it does come up again, as Lawyer Charoff said, is that it starts, it sets the table back to where it was. It's a, it's a clean slate, and that's, it's taking a wrinkle out and, and just smoothing things out. It has nothing to do with the historical designation, or voting to bulldoze, or anything like that. It's just putting the old school back into the same zoning as where we're sitting right now, and as, as where the library and the civic center are. It's just, it's just making this, again, for Treasure Coast, you might say, all one big blank canvas. So there, there's no, I don't see this as being detrimental to saving or not saving the school.
Please call the roll.
It's Patrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Casella. Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
As one of our citizens and CRA member, Mr. Carrot George, suggested, I wish this was tabled and would not come forth, as it's coming forth. It seems like it's a rush. I'm in a quandary, because I do believe, as I stated every time, that the land- I'm going to, since I, I lost this battle, and I don't mind being on the record, I'm gonna vote like Mr. McCray did. No.
Motion passes three to two. Proposed ordinance 14-004 on first reading.
An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, rescinding ordinance 13-001, designating the property known as the Boynton High School, located at 125 East Ocean Avenue, as a local historic site, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. The only thing that this item has in common with, with A is that passing the ordinance would restore the property to its designation prior to the agreement with the developer being denied.
Is there a motion?
Can I, can I ask a question to the lawyer?
Well, we need a motion, so we're gonna have discussion.
Okay, I make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll pass the gavel and second the motion. Under discussion, I'm sorry.
Open for discussion? Does this affect us legally if we, if we keep this as it is, historic site, local historic site? site, legally, does it help or hurt our case, or it does nothing to our case?
I don't think it has any effect on the case-
Okay.
...in the manner that I described for the previous agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Casella.
There's no, there's no comment on first reading.
No.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
No.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
No.
Motion fails.
Fails four to one.
Very good. Okay, proposed ordinance number 14-005 on first reading.
An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, designating the property known as the Lake Boynton Estates entirety feature, located at 569 West Ocean Avenue, which is more fully described herein as a local historic site, providing a non-severability clause and an effective date.
Proposed ordinance number 14-005 on first reading, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say a little bit on this, is this, correct me if I'm wrong, is this found by the, the post, the Legion?
Yeah, yes, yes, right by the railroad track.
It was my understanding, there were, one time, there was two of these?
Yes, there's only one left.
Only one left, and there was a nice train station, and one time-
The train station's gone, but it used to be, yeah.
That's, okay. Great, that's all I wanted.
It's a pillar of some sort, yeah.
I, I just, I hope that, that once we do this, is that it's taken better care of, because the last time I was there, it was overgrown with weeds and vines, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. This is first reading, so there's no public input, please call the roll.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Aye.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella.
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Okay. If there's no other information coming from the commission, we can close with the brand statement. Breeze into Boynton Beach, America's gateway to the Gulf Stream. Stay on the journey.